Judy.
Hi.
How are you?
I guess I should show myself, right? Hi.
It's nice to do that.
I'm beautiful, right? It's so awful looking at yourself, isn't it? I hate it.
I'm kind of used to it, but it's bizarre.
You're used to it?
Well, I'm on Zoom a lot.
Yeah, I know, but all I can do is see myself. I can't think of like, I just think, oh, God, I look so awful. But anyway.
That's how I feel about my voice. When I hear my own voice, I don't like it.
I do voice lessons on Zoom, so I'm kind of used to that problem.
You do voice lessons? What does that mean?
I take voice lessons from a teacher.
Really? How come?
Because I'm a singer and.
Oh, wow. Yeah. I see, of course, voice lessons. I'm in, I'm in visual artist, so. I didn't, when you said voice lessons, I thought public speaking. But it's the same, right?
Well, some of it's same, yeah. Some of it's the same. I've got that thing set up. Now, I haven't gone for the rest of their presentation and lined that up. Do you want me to or just the map you sent me?
Yeah, just that map, Judy. I think that should do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Peter. How are you?
Hey.
I need to get the agenda up on my iPad. Oh, heck. I didn't do the Lions thing. Let me do that while we're waiting for everything.
Hi, Stuart. How are you?
Ashley, how you doing?
I'm good.
Hi, Stuart.
Hey, Judy, how are you?
Okay. Getting tired of gray weather. I feel like I could go back to Michigan if I wanted so much gray weather.
Yeah, then you gotta deal with the water. You have better water.
That's true, truly.
Hey, James.
There he is. Hi, James.
Hello.
Ashley?
Yeah.
The Lions Way thing is Lions Rental LLC. Is that right?
Uh, that is, here it is. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, hi, everybody. It is 6:30 and we do have a call. So I would like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for April 7, 2022. Do you have any updates to the agenda?
I do not have, no.
Alrighty, and the minutes will do it the next meeting. Under Communications and Announcements, we have a mailing from the New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation regarding the Woodstock Artists Association. And then we've got four emails regarding the cell tower, two from Councilman Bennett regarding the master management agreement, one from Supervisor McKenna regarding the master management agreement, and mailing from AT&amp;T regarding the Centerline Communications. So. Okay, so under New Business, we have, under Schedule Business, two public hearings, and then we have a sketch plan review, and then we have two discussions. So the discussions. And under Discussions, we have two, and the last one is the Centerline Communications, which I'm going to ask the Vice Chair Stuart to present. So just waiting a minute so the public hearing starts on time.
I guess I'll get Benjamin, I'll get Fisher Vita up while we're waiting. Okay, I've got that map up. I, I, yeah, I didn't look for their proposal, though. Let me see.
Oh, and I can screen share if you need me to bring up the plans or anything.
I'm getting them.
I see John Lavelle is just connecting now. Okay. So our first public hearing is Katherine M. Fisher and Benjamin Vita, and this is a special use permit number 22-012A. And this is a virtual public hearing for a special use permit application to construct in addition to an existing dwelling in the scenic overlay in R5 zoning district located at 222 Hutchins Hill Road in Shady. So we have reviewed this case and we have done a site visit. I believe James did it. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, great. So entertain a motion to open the public hearing. So moved. On favor. Okay. So. Who is representing this case?
I am.
Oh, great. Okay. Would you please tell the board and the public what you are proposing?
Oh, yeah, we're proposing to build a screen and porch off of our house that would then connect to an artist's studio. And there'll be a deck out in front of that screen and porch as well. So sort of a attached, semi-attached studio addition.
Okay. I think we've covered this in our earlier review of it, but just to be sure that all outside lighting would be dark sky compliant and that you're not exceeding glazing limitations.
Well, I think we still might be in, in a little bit over that, but I don't know if because it's completely out of view in, in the way it's positioned, I don't know if that was, was, was resolved or not.
We have a drawing that makes that clear. Is it one of these three files?
Yeah, I remember there's quite a few windows on that one side.
Now, let me, let me see if there's any more in that document that I didn't. Ah, no.
There was a drawing.
There was a drawing?
Yeah. First saw the case.
Well, it's not in this, in this document, so I'm not sure where to look for it, but that's not a huge problem.
I do remember it was a bit over. I guess the question is, is there proposed screening or shading at all on those windows?
Well, they have like a low reflectivity glare proof, low E tinting on them. That's going to be compliant with the New York State Energy Recommendation, so that also reduces light spillage to the exterior. And it's substantially shaded by trees around both evergreen and, and deciduous trees that are much, much taller than the proposed building, so it's quite low. So I don't think it would be visible. We don't have any kind of view on our property, so we're, we're sort of tucked, and that's going to be the south facing side. So I don't think that it will be visible. Even, even if the trees.
There are trees here. I can see there were trees around here. What you're seeing is wetland buffers, which obviously you're not infringing on.
Yeah, the addition would be right next to the house, so right attached to the house there. And so it's sort of tucked into these trees even more than the actual house.
Where am I?
It's over, it'll be on, on your right side there.
Over here.
Right here, yeah. Straight out from the house on the right there. So it's sort of quite, quite invisible over there.
This is taken in the winter, so we can see the branches of the deciduous trees, but probably.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, right there to the right.
Okay, I can see it's well, you know, shaded and well covered, but just to stay in compliance, I think what we ought to say, because I can't remember, I know we were a bit over, I can't remember how much, but maybe we should put in the resolution that some mitigation can be done to, to stay within code. By mitigation, I'm saying either screening or, or maybe if your windows do comply with non-reflectivity, that would also solve the issue if they're non-reflective. I realize that it's well protected, but I just, I want to make sure we stay in our codes here in the scenic overlay.
Yeah. They're definitely low reflectivity and low E tinted. But I mean, I don't think any glass is going to be completely non-glare. Obviously, it's going to have.
The village or anything, so that's not quite the issue. Okay, we'll solve that one. Let me get to the public. Is there any member of the public here for this case?
I believe Kathy was here. I'm not sure if she had something to say. Kathy Ruttenberg?
Yes, hi, I'm here because I'm just curious. I'm neighbors with Jim and Janet Nelson, so I was on for that, for that case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ashley, are there any calls or letters from the public regarding this case?
Not that I have seen, no.
All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
On favor. Aye. Aye. Okay, so. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to deem the application complete pending draft resolution. And in that resolution, I'd just like to address the glazing to make sure we're at least addressing it and staying within code. So can I get a, a vote to make a motion to deem the application complete? So moved. On favor. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, you're good to go. And as soon as Melissa gets back, we'll get your resolution drawn up.
Okay, and should I follow up then with Melissa with something in writing about how we'll solve the window?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we get that covered in there, so.
Okay. So should I, should I email her something?
You can, you can shoot her an email, just letting her know that, that you understand where you are, where you're at, and then she'll send you back an email just letting you know anything that she needs from you, and then she'll work on your resolution.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we'll figure something out. Yeah, and maybe we can reduce the size a little bit, too.
Or just, you know, some kind of mitigation of some sort. I know it's not much over, so it wouldn't take much to, to get compliant.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll figure it out. Maybe, maybe there's some way to just tick the size down a little bit, too.
Okay, and as I say, there's, you know, you can put awnings over different things to, to, to cover that a bit more. I appreciate that the trees are doing it, so. We're just trying to stay to the letter of the code on the scenic.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I will, uh, we'll figure it out and, and I'll definitely talk to the architect, see if we can just shrink them down.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, good.
Okay.
Okay, our next public hearing. Look. Is James E. and Janet M. Nelson, Planning Board Case 22-0734A, a virtual public hearing for a subdivision application of a 3.6 acre lot into two parcels of 2.5 and 1.1 acres in the, in the, in this, in the zoning district located in Wittenburg Road. And the rep is Donald Brewer. So we make a motion to open the public hearing. Salute. On favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Don, would you tell the public and the board what your proposal is?
Okay, good evening. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this was a property that yes, a few years back, they were going, they were thinking of putting apartment houses there, but they've since changed that whole idea and they just want to, he wants to build a house on a larger piece of property for himself and his wife, and he would like to sell the lot number two, 1.106 acres in part to help pay for building a house and that.
Okay, Don.
Got the approvals from the Subject Systems, sent those in. And he's got, I believe he's got the, I believe he's got the approvals for the curb cuts there.
Okay, well, those are the main two things. If you got curb cut and you got border health, that's all we need. Let me ask the public, if there's anybody in the public questions for this case?
Yes, um, could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I thought you weren't able to subdivide that kind of, I thought it had to be above five acres.
It's neighborhood commercial.
Uh-huh, so he would be able to build as many houses on that lot as he wanted?
Well, not necessarily, but it's not subject to the same size limits as an R5.
So the building that he's already started, that's the, that's the front, and he would build a house on the back part that's next to my land?
Yeah, are you seeing the, the, the drawing that we're looking at?
I believe so.
It shows the proposed house.
Right, yeah.
And it's within the setbacks.
Where's your property, ma'am?
Um, I'm Louisian Hazel. I own the old plumbing. It's a studio. That's where I am now.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess I was interested because if, if he was splitting and gonna sell the lot aligned with my property, I would be interested, but I can see what, I didn't know what he was doing, so I see what he's doing there. But he's already started building. I mean, they've already put a foundation. I guess that's the front part, right?
Down in this, down in this area.
Yeah, they've already built. They already put two foundations in for those buildings, so that means, that means that instead of just those two big apartment buildings, it's going to be that and his house, right?
There's not going to be apartment buildings.
Well, if you sell it, you don't, I mean, you already have the, they've already started building there, so would they just take that away then?
All right, I think with, yeah, go ahead, Don, explain.
His plans is to build a, a single family home there. On the one acre.
John, you want to?
Yeah.
They did.
Well, this is far less intensive than the original plan.
Getting some feedback. If someone's not speaking, your device, please.
I can't find who it is. Do you see it?
I think it's on John, to tell the truth.
No, no. I just said that for the purposes of, of, this is a far less intensive proposal than the first one.
Yes, okay, yeah, the original proposal was.
If you sell that lot, then you're saying it's a commercial lot and anybody could build anything on that then, so you're not really going to be able to control that then, right?
No, that's not true. They still have to come to us with a proposal. And its impact on the neighborhood is part of our responsibility.
Well, it was a beautiful forest and the whole forest got cut down and then.
I know, I'm not happy about it either.
It's then it was, been this industrial site, and then you, I went to that meeting where you approved these two apartment buildings, and they've been working on that, so will they take that, those foundations away, or what's the plan? I mean, I, I don't really care. It's obviously their land and I respect whatever they need to do with it, but on the other hand, it's been a major eyesore for years now, and sometimes people blame me for cutting down the woods because they thought it was connected to my property, do you know? So like I say, I'm on here because I thought if he was subdividing, I would buy the lot that was next to my property and just plant trees, but I can see that's not what they have in mind, so.
Where did he, where, where are the foundations going in? Over here on, on the, on the small part of the property?
Those foundations, those are cement slabs there that had been started, yes.
Where I'm showing my hand moving, right?
Correct.
So they were able to get a building permit for that based on the fact that they owned the whole property. Now, if they subdivide, what they've already done is on the part of the property that they're not planning to sell. Am I correct?
No, that's the one they're selling. The one next, the one next to my property is where they're saying they're going to build a home.
Oh, okay.
See, that's what I'm asking. Does that mean if they sell that little lot, then can they just build? I mean, it's too bad. It was really the entrance to the, to, it was such a beautiful, you turn that corner and saw, you know, the Catskills, and now it's become, because I have to tell you that the parking in that restaurant is, there's always cars backing into me there. It's a very dangerous corner. The parking is not good for that little restaurant, and now if there's another commercial building, that will change that whole corner, and it's a shame, but that's the future, right? You can't control that.
Well, the plans, plans are two residential houses, one, one residential house for lot two and one on lot one.
Yeah, that, that whole area is neighborhood commercial, and it could have been a commercial lot, but now it's going to be residential. Or at least.
So the, the, the little piece that they're selling, that's not still commercial then with this plan?
The zoning is, but that doesn't mean the use has to be.
I know, but it's not a protected piece then with this. Now, he's saying that he's going to take the larger piece of this lot and build a home for himself, right?
Yes.
And then that corner lot is kind of just a free for all because you're saying it's a commercial lot then, right? And it has a, it already has one building and, and a, I guess, two cement slabs, or they put a foundation in for two other buildings, which was going to be the apartment buildings.
Yeah, he has a garage there and, and then there's two concrete slabs, one.
Well, nothing is on, on here.
Orange one's going to be a house.
This is an old photograph. This is not current, right?
This is this year, but it was the flyover. It was in the spring. I mean, it was in 2021.
Yeah, it's before he built on it.
Before he put the slabs in, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm just curious what, what's going to happen then, you know, so I guess that's good that the house is going to be next to mine. I'm glad that it's not going to be, you know, commercial. Even though I shouldn't complain because the plumber who owned the building I have was, that was a commercial, and I think there was a lot of uh people against that, so.
Yeah, I think this is uh gonna be much better than the previous plan for this property.
But what 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 is gonna happen with that little property, though? How is that gonna, is that now that's deemed commercial? And that means it's not protected at all, right, that?
As as Judith said, anything else that would happen would have to come before the planning board for planning. Right now, it's just two residential.
But not much, so what can if I mean, I thought, so it's, it can be subdivided because it's a commercial lot? Is that what you're telling me?
It's being subdivided right now.
Well, that's what we're we're talking about, right? Have you approved it already?
Can't do anything else without going before the planning board.
Is this the planning board?
This is the planning board.
Okay, so you haven't approved it yet?
We're going to vote on it in a minute.
Okay, so what I'm asking is 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 are you open to to subdivising this because it's a commercial lot?
It doesn't matter if it's commercial or not, it's a it's a it's a legal subdivision.
But I thought under five acres, you couldn't subdivide.
It depends on the air, on the zoning. In an R five, you can't subdivide, I'm looking it up right now, actually.
Alright, uh till then, is there anybody else in the public have a question for this uh case? Anyway, to answer, I guess to answer your question is when when this plot gets approved, it's written right on the plot that that no further anything can be done without coming back before the planning board.
Well, I mean, he he's had, he had that other which was controversial, the building, the two the two um buildings and that was approved and, you know, I I totally respect, it's his land, he can do whatever he want, but, you know, I just am curious now how that's gonna be handled because, you know, the area is changing so quickly. And it is a shame to see if this becomes now divided and then divided and then you have more and more buildings on this corner here.
Okay, um I get your point, but is this, as I said, it is uh zone, neighborhood commercial, that's the zoning.
Yeah, but so that.
I can't find any indication of how small a lot can be within that district. Maybe I'm not looking in the right place.
I have it right there on the map.
Okay.
And and regardless, it would never come before us without getting approved by the building department, so. Okay, uh since there was no other public input, let me ask uh if there were any letters or phone calls regarding this?
No, there are not.
Okay, actually, um okay, so then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so again, I'd like to make a or um entertain a motion to deem the application complete pending draft resolution. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So, um just just for one thing, can you get back to me because you said that you weren't sure about the ability to subdivide? So can somebody just let me know then?
I made it for Melissa, she can check on it and she can reach out to you.
That's so sweet of you, thank you so much, thank you for everything, you do a beautiful job protecting our our area, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um under sketch plan review, we have uh Lyons Rentals LLC, special use permit twenty-two zero six six four. And this is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application for construction of a driveway for access and parking in the R five and scenic overlay zoning districts located on Lyons Way, which is off of Hutchins Hill Road in Shady. And the representative is Greg Ziola.
Hi.
If you're there, would you please tell the board?
Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Hello, hi.
Hi. Why don't you tell the board uh what it is you're proposing to do?
Well, uh it's a, it's a little backwards, um uh this winter with all the ice storms, I live at fifteen Lyons Way, which is very uh steep. Um and to access my car without falling uh was very hard. Um it's really steep and to have a flat driveway to just park my car on would be so useful. But what I am truly looking to do over time is find, um I have been approved uh with Joe Boick and the Health Department for Septic, um we have like a whole set of plans, but to choose the exact right place for a structure, I would like to go through a variance process with you uh in the future, but to have the current use of the driveway for parking um a car uh would just be so great, um and would allow me also to perceive the property for this future plan.
So this is your driveway coming up this way?
Let me see now, sorry. It's hard to, I'm looking on my phone with you. Um let me just, I'm try, oh, there's uh, is that Calvin's house, where are we?
This is, this should be your property.
There we are, I see it now.
Is that the right property?
So now, I'm sorry, what are you saying?
Is this the right property?
It's uh, well, it's over here, no, no, that's not the right property, it's the adjacent one to the left. Not that one, that's Calvin, yes, there you go.
Okay.
That area, yeah, down below Lyons Way. Yes, in this area.
Oh, you got a long driveway and it certainly is steep.
No, 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 that's that's Lyons Way. It's over, it's down below, it's in that, yeah, if you keep moving it, I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing, so.
I don't know, because I took, you know, I used the address and according to this.
Yes.
Oh, hold on, I'm not in the right place here, I gotta get to the right layer.
Well, Judy's doing that, can can Greg tell us what kind of driveway do you have now and where is it relation to your house?
Well, I'm confused, that's that's where I live right now, this is the, what we're talking about is the adjacent lot.
Okay, this fifteen Lyons Way. And you're talking about the adjacent lot that's comes right down to the road?
Um, well, no, that's where Mitch lives, no, it's, there's a road coming off uh Lyons Way into the, it's not even a road, it's just like dirt and there's a little stone gate that comes off Lyons Way into this area, I don't really know. What you have highlighted is fifteen Lyons Way and not the lot we're talking about, so I'm confused.
What's the address of the one you're talking about?
Oh, boy, uh one dash, ah man, uh.
Now, that's that, that's the, that's the SBL, which I was not able to find for some reasons that have nothing to do with you, but.
Okay. I can get you the the SBL, but there's no address currently.
Okay, then is it this one?
Hold on, I'm sorry, I just lost my connection there. Wait, okay, oh, boy, give me one second. Okay, where are we now?
It's right.
Yes, it's that one, uh no, that's not it, it's above that one, because that's Hutchins Hill.
Well, there's this and there's that.
That's it, that's.
This one. Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, it's hard to see, but yes. Yes, uh is that it? Yeah, I think that's it, it's the adjacent one, so yes, that's correct, that's it.
There are two that are under Lyons Rentals LLC and that's the other one. Okay.
They're both under Lyons Rentals LLC, it's a little confusing.
That's probably the right one, um my apologies.
Not a problem at all, I I I'm I'm, yes.
Okay, so let me ask a question, um the application before us, somebody's got their speaker on, the application before us is to construct a driveway.
Yes.
But you're also saying at some point you'd be interested in doing a house.
Perhaps, yes.
And the driveway therefore would service the house?
Yes, in the future, it would service that house, for now, or, I live, just to be clear, the lot she has highlighted right now fifteen Lyons Way, that's where I currently live, right adjacent, on a very steep hill.
Okay, so before us now is just the application for a driveway in the scenic overlay.
True.
Um, would that follow this? Or would it be off of it branching up somewhere or?
Exactly, I'm so glad you're asking that, so check it out. That, what looks like a driveway, or it is, that's Lyons Way, that's going up to George Cross's house. What we are speaking of is this little area, this little triangle below. That, yes, yes, and coming in from where it forks to the right, where it's, yes, exactly, and entering this lot.
The lines may not be exactly right on this map, we're aware that that's not always accurate. So you're talking about in this area here, you wanna put in?
Exactly, above, according to Joe Boick and the Highway and Safety Commission, and I'm not trying to bog you guys down with details, but just letting you know, to build above would be very complicated for the radius turnage of an emergency vehicle. And this area down below is excellent. According, yes.
Okay, so what we have to do next is do a site visit.
Okay.
Um and since it's a driveway, um we'll probably need to get we probably need to get input from the Highway Department or the Building Department uh to make sure the driveway, the proposed driveway uh meets their standards, so we need to do a site visit. So, um we gotta get a couple of members or at least a member of the planning board out there and maybe even meet with you to see where it is, unless the driveway is staked out, if you have your proposed driveway staked out.
Uh in the plan, there's a, one of the plans that were presented to you, it should be there, if that's what you mean.
But I mean, in the field, is our stake showing where the proposed? Or you're saying it's already, already a dirt road there?
Well, no, it's like, I mean, it's just been like there, you know, uh there's like uh an area where there's like an old stone gate, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so what would really be good is if you could stake out, you know, take some stakes with some ribbon and show where you would like your driveway to be. And ideally even show where your proposed house would be, it's not before us now, so that isn't an issue, but um the two should be somewhat related to make sure that it's, the driveway is gonna get to a place where it's okay to build.
Yes, here's my question to you, uh if you don't mind, um so there's a spot at the end of the proposed driveway, um that's within the standard uh setbacks. But I believe if I was to build the driveway and then show you guys and go through a variance process with you and take a little more time to choose the spot, I believe everybody will be happier in terms of just the aesthetics. There's a spot that I think is just a little short of standard setbacks and that's what I'm proposing and why I'm eager just to get the driveway built, like I said, also for safety reasons at this point.
Now, you mentioned the stone gate, is that right here, there's a wall?
Yes, exactly, and you can see where it separates, that's like, that's what I'm referring to as the entrance, exactly. That's it.
Alright, great, alright, so we're gonna get the, get a site visit organized. And uh Melissa will contact you and uh we'll set it up. And Steve, uh John has his hand up, John Lovell?
Yeah, just clarification, are both of these lots in the same property owner's name?
Yes. It's me.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Have you, have you had it surveyed?
Yes, yes, I have.
And the survey stakes are there, so you were able to identify where areas?
I had them, I had them blaze it a while back for the setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Uh there's a plan we submitted to you that has the setbacks from Mitchell and the architect uh that I believe is to scale, but I don't know where that is, so.
Oh, we'll make sure we have them when we do the site visit.
Right, sure.
Stuart has a question?
Yeah, are there any trees that will have to be removed in order to uh put in the driveway?
Yes, there are a few, yeah.
What's a few, do you know?
Uh I don't know offhand.
Might be something the site visit could take a look at.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, um since it's just a driveway in front of us, we'll just deal with that and uh and the site visit will also help us understand where your proposed house is, so.
Okay, so you'd like me to stake it with with um like ribbons or something?
Yeah, just to uh either stake it with a ribbon on it, just so that we can see where where you're proposing it, alright?
Okay.
Alright, real good, um we'll get, we'll get in touch with you and arrange a site visit.
Alright, thank you so much.
You bet. Yeah?
Would it be helpful if he also marked the trees that he thinks come down?
That would be a good idea, if you could uh mark the trees that are going to have to come down.
Okay.
Because it is in the scenic overlay and we're getting pretty particular about things here, so.
Yes, okay.
Okay, great, great. Well, we'll be in touch with you then.
Alright, thank you so much.
You bet, anybody else on the board have questions for, we move on? Okay. The next one before us. I'll get my person to work here. Okay. The next one is the discussion review of Anthony Nicolak and Rebecca Chalklin, Planning Board Case twenty-one dash one two two five and wetlands and water course permit number twenty-one dash zero four three. This is a discussion of a lot line revision and wetlands and water course permit application to transfer more or less five acres from SBL thirty-eight point seven, which is originally twenty-six and a half acres, to SBL thirty-eight point six four dash seven, which is originally zero point three five acres. Establishing two new lots of twenty-one plus acres and five point eight acres involving a stream crossing and regulated wetland and buffer areas in the R five zoning district located at one eighty and one eighty-two Van Dale Road and Woodstock and the, and Hurley, because the, some of it's Hurley, some's in Woodstock. And uh we have Scott from Catterskill Associates and Andrade and then from not from architecture and we have uh Jewels and Gubits from the legal team here. So, I just wanna um remind the board that we have reviewed this a couple of times. And uh the first time they made their presentation, they did not show the wetlands, so we had that delineated and they came back before us and they showed the wetlands, but they didn't understand or they didn't read the town code to know Woodstock has a wetlands and water course law, which has a hundred foot buffer, so their original application did not show any buffers, so then they re-applied it, showing the buffers. And um and as a result all the road, I should say ninety percent of the road, house and SDA, the Septic, are all within the buffer. And we did a site inspection. In fact, Stuart and I did it and we wrote a report. And it was a negative report regarding the disruption to the wetlands and water courses. So um you know, really, it it would help before people go through all the issue of engineering, designing, septic roads and everything, if they just take a look on the town website and look at the town codes. Because we have setbacks uh on properties that people don't, just haven't read the code, don't know we have, uh and we have a wetlands law. And let me explain that the people Woodstock voted to create a wetlands and water course protection law in order to protect our environment. And we do that for the simple reason of health, safety and welfare. So we created a law that prohibits development in wetlands and water courses and their buffers. So we created a law that prohibits development in wetlands and water courses and their buffers. However, when we wrote the law, we were aware of the fact that there were legal lots of record that were created before the wetlands law. And therefore, if people want to develop in these already approved lots. They have to stay away from wetlands and water courses, but in order to accommodate the, the building in the lot. We wrote into the law that if we have to do a minor excursion into the buffer. To get a driveway in or a septic in, a very minor incursion, then we take that same amount of area. And we apply it somewhere else on the same property where it's doing good use as a wetlands buffer, and that's called mitigation. So, any amount of disturbance in a buffer has to be mitigated by adding that amount back to the correct spot. Now, we also realize that when we create a new lot in a subdivision. And there's wetlands and water courses, that they can't go through them. And so that when we design new lots, they have to skirt or go around wetlands or water course buffers, because that is the code. So, we got a letter, the planning board, myself and the rest of the members of the board, from lawyers here. I guess basically saying that we didn't know the law. So I just wanna be clear about this, I helped write the law, I'm a wetlands and water course delineator. I was also the wetlands and water course inspector. We wrote this law to prevent exactly what's being proposed. Exactly why we wrote this law, because the law says that the only way we can look at. Even mitigating is if there's no other way around it, so if you have a legal lot of record. And you gotta be able to put your house in there, and there's no other way you can get there, then we have to seriously consider. Going into parts of the buffer and mitigating that. However, we don't have to create a new lot where that creates us having to go through wetlands and buffers. So in this case, there is a small one-third acre lot in Hurley. I don't know how it got to be a lot because doesn't meet any of the codes, but it's not our problem, that's in Hurley. The applicant could build on that lot, it surely lets them, uh, or they have a twenty-seven acre lot. That they could divide and build on if they can do it without going in the wetlands and water courses. So, um, I'm gonna ask the board to ask whatever questions they have. But quite simply, I'm gonna put it that we basically have two choices. Either to retract the application, or we go ahead with the wetlands and water course permit process. In which the board will then go through a whole list. Of findings, and we will come to a conclusion whether or not this works within the wetlands and water course law and vote on it. So that being said, let me ask any member of the board that wants to ask the applicant any questions regarding this application.
I'm just observing that I brought up the map I have and your, the, the applicant's map. Actually was delineated, which is always more precise than the information I have, so it actually shows more. Wetland than what I had seen. I don't see any way to do this.
May, may I speak, this is, uh, John Capello, I don't know if you can hear me?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I wrote the letter and I must respectfully disagree with you. You made several legal conclusions, Mr. Chairman, I understand your concern, but you made conclusions. That appear to me are not supported by the law that you wrote.
Thank you, I helped write the law, believe me.
Well, I, I understand you helped write it, but you are trying to interpret it. And with all due respect, you are not an attorney. You may be a wetlands consultant, but the word prohibit is not in there. The word regu, the word regulate and permit is in there, so what may be in your mind. When you wrote it and helped write it is not what it says. So let's get that clear, now I don't wanna come in here and be confrontational, um. My client has worked, he's provide, worked to address the board's concerns. The impacts here have been reviewed by wetlands consultants from the Army Corps of Engineers. His particular wetlands, uh, consultants who is an expert to come up with the plan. That addresses, uh, the disturbance in here and also as far as mitigation proposes to. Uh, permanently, um. Restrict developments with the rest of the property, which will permanently. So some future board who may have a different opinion than this board on wetlands, uh, protection. Uh, will not be able to change the law to allow more lots here. Now, as far as mitigation, I'm not telling the board that we are not going to consider anything or work with the board, but I think. This board does owe it to consider this, to review the law. And frankly, I would suggest you talk to your attorney, because Mr. Chair, your conclusions and your opinion, I'm gonna have to ask you. To recuse yourself, because the, the opinions and the conclusions, you've come to a conclusion before you've done any review. Of this application and consideration of it, and to allow you to consider it now after the, the comments you made. Would be a, you know, a detriment to my client, so that there are members there. And once again, I didn't come here to be confrontational, I came here to listen, to determine a way, to see if there is a way. You know, we can work this out, but these claims that this law hasn't been read. And the claims of the conclusions that any new development is prohibited is not a correct legal clue, conclusion. Whether you wrote it or not, I would suggest you go back and read this law, because. It does, the whole permit process allows someone to develop, Mr. Nicolich in.
Okay, sir, I hear you, uh, you, what you guys should, I hear you, what you guys should have done is read the town code before you got this far. Is what you should have done, because you didn't know that Woodstock had a wetlands law.
Yes, we did.
Sir, you said, you keep telling me that it's Army Corps Engineers, it's the Woodstock Wetlands Law, I'm not interested in the Army Corps of Engineers.
You're putting words in my mouth now, just like you put.
Anyway, let's not go on about this, sir, this, I'm one vote, we're the seven, we're a seven board member, and we're gonna go through the process. And everybody has a vote and that's the law.
I appreciate.
So I'm just one vote, I'm just telling you that this application is exactly why we wrote the Wetlands and Water Course Protection Act. To prevent this, and since your own letter to me says right there, not. Right here in your own letter, you say. To. To permit some limited disturbance, limited. You've got ninety-nine percent disturbance, it's not limited.
It's limited disturbance of the whole disturbance.
It's not limited, where on your proposed lot can you replace all that, where, how are you gonna mitigate?
We offered to mitigate, hi, this is Scott from Catterskill Associates, we're offering to permanently protect eighteen point five acres.
But that's not.
Point five-five acres of disturbance.
That's not on this proposed law.
It's on lots of, that are part of this action, that is protecting offers.
Okay, so this is why we wrote the law, um, I'm gonna ask the board if any other board members have questions. If not, we will proceed with the Wetlands and Water Course Permit, uh, procedure, and then you'll get your answer.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, as proposed, it's a very small lot, and if I understand you correctly. You are saying you could offer mitigation by protecting a larger area, but it would be on a different lot.
But it's on the lot that we are subdividing from, so it's a part of this application and would be permanently protected. And as I spoke to you the last time, hold on, Peter, please let me speak. We can add to this lot, that area to this new lot, if it needs to be on the same lot of record.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Yes, if that is.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have questions for the applicant?
Peter?
Yeah, go ahead Stuart.
Mr. Stuart, I just have a question for you actually, as to whether, uh, our planning board attorney has reviewed the submission from Mr. Capello.
Not that I know of, no.
I think we should have that.
As I said before, it's the planning board's purview to review a wetlands and water course permit application. That's the law, if the planning board says yes, it's yes, if the planning board says no, it's no, you can then go to the ZBA. And, well, try to reverse that, but that's.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, you gave wrong legal advice, your board has asked. For you to consult the attorney for the planning board on a legal matter. You provided wrong advice, I cannot go to the ZBA to appeal the planning board decision, I would need to go to the Supreme Court.
Okay, sir, I know the town codes, I know the town laws, is there anybody else on the board have questions for this applicant?
Peter, this is Stuart again, uh, do we have, do we have an escrow on deposit on this matter for legal?
I don't believe so.
Is that, that would be an option.
If I may suggest, I don't see how we can make a decision on a lot that is not in its final form. So if the applicant wants to consider adding to the property as a way of mitigating it, I think we need a different. Description of the meets and bounds, and I do think we ought to talk to our attorney, but at the moment, I can't consider that the application is final.
Well Judy, to your point is that, um, if we, it's the cart before the horse, if we create the lot. If we create this lot, whether it's the bounds now or the bounds differently, then we're forced to try to find a way. To get the applicant to build in there. At the moment, the question before the board, when we review the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course Permit application. The first question is, is there any way to avoid this intrusion in the wetlands and buffers? And the answer is, yes, don't create the lot, that's the simple answer. So, anyway, um, the Stuart question, I don't know if we, when we would ask for, uh. Um, legal fees to be set aside, uh, I don't know.
Well, to me, this is Stuart again, it's, I mean, it's, it's a simple matter, if, if we wanna have our attorney look at it to, uh, to. Um, get an opinion, then now would be the time to establish an escrow, we have a right to establish escrows and require them. Uh, necessary consultations on these applications, so.
And it should be done, it should be done at this point, right Stuart, while we have the applicant in front of us, right?
Um, they're here, and why wouldn't we do it now, if, if we wanna get the opinion? But you're the chairman and, uh, you've staked out a position, but we've heard some, uh. You know, rather direct opposition to your analysis and I, I, I'm, I'm not, uh. Undermining what you said, I, I just, to me, when there's, uh, you know, a potential legal fight. I would feel better having our, our own attorney examine it, so at least, you know, we know that, uh. He, he sees it the way you do, or we wanna know if he doesn't.
Alright Stuart, I agree, why don't you propose, uh, an escrow, Stuart?
Okay, well, you know, I would suggest an escrow of twenty-five hundred dollars, um. Um, but John, John Lyons, our attorney, is actually on the line, uh, probably waiting for the next matter, but, um. Um, to me, that, that would be adequate for him to dive into this and suppose if we need more, we could ask for more, but, um. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Does the rest of the, uh, rest of the board have input on this?
I agree.
I agree. Okay. Alright then, um, that's what we shall do, um, we will get some input from our attorney. And then we will notify the applicant, uh, of the next step.
Who's representing the applicant here, because several people have spoken, Mr. Capello, you representing the applicant?
Uh, I'm the attorney for the applicant, um, you know, speaking on the legal issues, but, uh, Scott who spoke is the, um. Engineer and has designed it, so he has the particulars as to the disturbances or. You know, any of the particulars of the development and the mitigation measures.
Well, is the applicant agreeable to, uh, posting the escrow with, with?
I heard it's tabled until we post an escrow, so, uh, my app, our app, the applicant is not. In attendance, so I will check and he will either submit it or you won't hear it, so.
Okay, and Melissa Gray is the, uh, planning board clerk, so you should have her email to.
Yes, I do.
Respond with her about that.
Yes.
Uh, Ashley, you can let her know that this is what we've asked for.
Yes.
Yes, I made a note for.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, uh, consideration, and once again, I just wanna state that we're just asking for. A fair review, I, you know, welcoming the, uh, attorney's input and. Uh, you know, a proper way that if we can find a way to appropriately mitigate it, to address your real, uh, concerns and. Do this in the best way feasible to allow one house, additional house on, uh, what. Exists as two lots now, so, uh, thank you very much.
I will say this, Mr. Capello, this is just my own recollection, when we did the site review, that's a very wet piece of land. It's a, it's very wet, there's a lot of wetland there and, and, um, uh, you know, it's concerning, so, you know. I, I, I can understand why our chairman, uh, has taken a strong position on this, but I do think that, um. We ought to have our attorney review it.
Yes.
For our, for our own benefit.
Yeah, and I understand, and I am gonna defer to our engineers and our wetlands consultants to work with you. On those issues, you have every right to be concerned and have those issues addressed to your satisfaction. My concern is that when it's interpreted in a way to say. We, we can't proceed in some of the languages, I think you need some guidance as to what you, you can and can't do. On, under this law, so we could have a fair review, that's my only request, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you Stuart, and, um.
So, we need a motion just to table this pending receipt of escrow and obtaining of a legal opinion?
Okay, Stuart, please, please do so, make a motion.
Well, that's the motion to just table.
I'll second it.
Until, uh, if the escrow is posted and we have reviewed by our attorney.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Very good evening, everyone.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you Stuart, and next under discussion and review. Um, is, uh, I'm gonna turn over to Stuart, because it is the centerline communication, so Stuart.
Thank you, this is Stuart Lipkin, uh, vice chair of the planning board. Um, and, um, I note that Brenda Blast Lewis, uh, is on the line, can you hear us, Ms. Lewis?
Uh, yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, and is anyone else with you, uh, from the applicant?
Uh, no, Sarah is not able to be here tonight.
Okay, okay, so, um, this matter was, uh, scheduled today for discussion amongst the planning board. I'm glad that the representative is here, in case any questions come up or need, things need to be addressed. Um, there are several issues pending here, before we get to the, there are issues pending before we get to the, the merits of the application. Um, and this is an application for an eligible facilities request. Um, the first issue is the authority of, um, the planning board. Uh, to consider this application, and basically, we've been. Wanting to know whether the owner of the tower and the parcel on which it's located has authorized our consideration. And, uh, we've gone around and around on that issue, but, um, recently received an email from. Uh, Supervisor McKenna, which has confirmed in writing that the town board is well aware of, of these applications by centerline. Uh, for the, uh, site plan modification and, uh, special use permit for the equipment change add-on the tower. And, um, his email, email, um, confirms that the town board is aware of it. And, um, and he doesn't state any objection to the town, to the, uh, planning board considering the application. And we have received no objection from the town board, uh, to our considering the application. And we also have, uh, in our file, a signed authorization from Crown Castle. As the, uh, managing agent of the tower for the town board. Reporting to confer authority, uh, for us to consider it, so, um. I believe that there is now sufficient basis. So um, I believe that there is now sufficient basis uh, for us to consider and decide um, these applications by centerline, uh, as the owner, namely the town board, knows of the application and has voiced no objection to our considering it. And I ran this by um, our planning board attorney and he, he has given me an opinion that he believes that what we have is sufficient for us to move forward to the merits.
That's correct, Stuart.
That's correct.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Lyons has, has confirmed that position. So from my perspective, I think that uh, we can um, move beyond the question of authority. I think that since our lawyer has taken the position and I, I agree with him that we now have sufficient authority to move ahead, I, I would suggest that we do move to the merits um, of the application. But before I do, is there any uh, concern or objection from any other board members to our doing so? To get to the merits, John Laval?
I'm just concerned that they simply are aware of it, neither approved nor denied. The town board.
Right. Well, that's correct. Um, and that's the limit of what we've gotten from um, both the supervisor um, and from um, from Bennett as well, so.
Um, yeah, I would only add Stuart that I, I think that the way that the communication took place, there was certainly an opportunity for other town board members to object. Everybody was on the same email string uh, and no objections had been received.
Right. So, that's as far as they are willing to go. But John.
John Lyons, yes. There's, I mean, the fact that they neither, they're not objecting does not give their approval.
Well, what we need is their authority to consider it. Because we, cause that's, that was what, what has been stopping us.
Yeah, I think John Laval, that we uh, i- if you go back to the purpose of the landowner authorization form, which is primarily to create a mechanism uh, so that the planning board can be assured that a landowner knows that a particular application is in front of the board and does not have objections to the board uh, processing the application. I think those uh, functions have been fulfilled under the facts of the present circumstances. Uh, I think we're quite com, we're quite confident that the town board is aware of this is moving forward and no objections been raised.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board uh, in regard to uh, moving ahead to the merits? Okay, so, so hearing none, um, I think we have a consensus to move to the merits. And as to the merits, um, and you know, this is a, an eligible facilities request. And if it qualifies, if it meets the criteria, then as we've discussed several times, federal law in this area requires that this planning board as a regulatory body approve the applications if it is an eligible facilities request. And I, I believe that the applications do meet um, the requisites for an eligible facilities request. To my understanding, your criteria is that to, to be such a request, the application has to propose a modification um, to existing equipment on the tower, which does not substantially alter the dimensions um, of the tower. So uh, and that's my uh, paraphrase of, of what an eligible facility request is. And um, uh, in this case, I think the application clearly meets that criteria. It actually reduces the number of antennas on the tower from six to four and does not in any way increase the height or the, the width, you know, of the, of the footprint of the tower uh, or the height of it. So I, I think we are constrained as a planning board to approve it, but I do have some uh, questions, uh, things I want to bring up before um, uh, entertaining comment. Just the other day, we got a uh, a mailing from the applicant. And, and that consisted of an extra copy of the um, letter of authority from Crown Castle. And it also consisted of an analysis report of many pages. And there was one page in the analysis report that I had a question on and I wanted to ask Ms. Lewis, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so there is an antenna inventory in that, in that report that came, I think it came from a council for, for centerline. Uh, did you receive a, a copy of what she sent us?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there's an antenna inventory in there that has a, a grid of some, lists fourteen antennas. And.
It, it.
And I, I don't know why it would list, it says three point oh antenna inventory and it lists fourteen different lines of antennas. Can you, are you able to explain to me what that's about and why there are fourteen listed if there's only six on the tower?
I, I can't explain that. I, uh, there's not fourteen antennas installed on the tower and there won't be fourteen antennas installed on the tower. Uh, this report was just sent to you as a courtesy to give you an idea of, you know, frequencies that each of these antenna models um, puts out. And that's, that's my explanation.
So it's a technical report that indicates what each kind of antenna does? But that's not all on the, on the tower, is that?
No. Yes, that correct.
Okay. Well, I suppose that clears up the confusion that I had. Uh, they're identified, you know, and, and rather than uh, increase the size of my computer screen to try and, and read the plans again and figure out the why the fourteen versus the six, I figured I would just ask you, so um, okay. So you're still saying there's six on the, on the array and that you're going to reduce it to four, is that right?
They're, yeah, they're replacing four antennas uh, with two new antennas. So we're actually, yeah, we're reducing from four to two.
You mean a total of six to four?
There's six on the, on the tower now for eighteen, right?
Yes, hold on here, I'm just going to pull up my uh, I just want to pull up my CDs. From being explicitly accurate here. All right. Currently installed on the tower are six and we're reducing the total number of antennas to four, so we are removing two.
Right. So it's a net reduction, so you're going down from six.
Net reduction.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
So, um, th- there's one item I wanted to apprise the representative of, and that is um, we have a two-stage vote that we're going to take. One is to approve or deny the application on a condition, and if we approve it, it'll be conditionally upon a second vote to approve a formal written resolution, um, which will then be, be signed and will constitute a formal action approving. And um, um, I have added into the um, draft resolution a condition that the antennas, the new antennas are going to go on to the tower uh, being enclosed in something called a stealth sock. Are you familiar with stealth socks?
I, yeah, I've, I've heard of them, yeah.
The idea is that since this is a camouflage design uh, monopole, um, um, we want to maintain the um, the concealment elements that are already on the tower. And um, um, uh, I think that's a reasonable thing to do and I'm, I'm going to be asking our board to adopt that as one of the conditions of approval, so that um, the town can continue to receive the benefit of the concealment effects that they paid valuable consideration for uh, years ago when, when they agreed to the design of the tower construction. And it does go back to the original time when the tower was constructed. And so that's an important uh, uh, element of our considerations for the town because um, for obvious reasons that we want to preserve the aesthetic and the uh, scenic viewshed that are important to the town uh, fathers when they, and I shouldn't say fathers, should be gender neutral, but the town representatives when they, when they um, uh, made their decisions about building the tower and its design. So um, just wanted to alert you that that's going to be in there. So, uh, does it, any of the board members um, have any comments about anything that I said or any concerns before we go to a vote?
I appreciated your thoroughness on this point, Stuart.
Oh, thank you. Um, okay, so at this point, um, first motion would be, I'll entertain a motion um, to conditionally approve the SEP and um, site plan modification applications that are before us from centerline um, for the proposed equipment changes on the tower. And that will be subject to a formal resolution, which will be the next motion. So does anyone want to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Any seconds?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Yes.
John Laval, you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Simply based upon the fact that I did not receive any answers to the information I asked at the previous two hearings, that's all.
Okay, so uh, just let me pause, so who's in favor? Judy, are you in, in favor?
And James.
And Peter? And James and myself, so the motion carries four to one. John Laval is on record as against. Okay. So the next motion would be to um, adopt the resolution and, which was circulated this afternoon by myself by email to all the planning board members. It had uh, most recent revisions that I don't believe that um, Melissa was able to get to because of her um, uh, illness. And so um, I inputted them and sent it around, so. Before making that motion, does anyone have any concerns about the draft as I circulated it? Okay, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the um, resolution as emailed by myself to the planning board members this afternoon.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? John Laval's opposed, all the other board members present uh, are in favor, so that motion carries. So with those motions, um, uh, these applications are granted and disposed of. And I don't believe we have any further um, business to conduct on them. I do want to reiterate, I do want to reiterate um, that um, I think I speak for the board that um, under the federal rules, we're constrained from going into the environmental um, uh, effects of uh, the energy emanating from the tower. And I believe we're also constrained from looking at health effects and we haven't considered those in, in making our decisions tonight. Um, and for any members of the public that are listening, um, anyone who has concerns about those questions really should direct their energies to the town board because my view that the town board retains uh, discretion to address questions of health concerning what's coming out of the tower. Um, and it's up to them to decide how they want to uh, deal with that, what areas they want to inquire of, who we want to call in, what kind of uh, experts they might want to consult and so on. So um, with that, is anyone else?
Anything to that, Stuart?
What's that?
Can I, if I may add something to that, I would also suggest members of the public who are concerned, address their concerns to Congressman uh, Delgado.
Okay, let me hear the comments before we uh, close this matter, John Laval?
Just quickly, I felt that it was a less than transparent process. And the fact that the applicant really dodged a lot of questions. And that was my concern from the beginning.
Well, I appreciate you.
I was not, okay, I was not hanging my hat on any kind of health concerns as based upon some of the input we've received, but simply some of the technical parts of it regarding coverage propagation for the town in how do these changes affect it? I still don't know. That's it.
All right, thank you, John, and um, hearing no further comments, um, I'm going to close this matter. We're concluded and I want to thank Ms. Blask Lewis for her participation, we are concluded.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
And if you want to contact um, Melissa uh, next week sometime to get a copy of the um, resolution, once it's signed, you can do that.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you and thank you, John Lyons, for your support and help on this.
Welcome, Stuart, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Stuart.
I'm going to turn the meeting back over to our chairman.
And all I'm going to say is, does anybody on the board have any uh, thing to say before adjournment? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, everybody, have a good wet evening. Hope the sun comes out soon.
Ashley, I just want to ask you.
If I wanted this kind of weather.
Ashley, did you get the, did you get the resolution that I sent? It was around uh, two fifty-three or two fifty-eight?
I did, I printed, I have it here, I made some notes on it for Melissa.
Yeah, just point out to Melissa that that has changes that I made, so she can call me if she has any questions. But I want to make sure she's working off the right document.
Yep, and I highlighted the changes that you, you made so that she can see the differences.
Okay, all right, very good.
Stuart, Stuart, in, in your email, I, I had some comments on that resolution as well and that's in your email box. I know we, we worked up close to the meeting today, but.
Yeah, I actually hadn't seen them, so I'll take a look and uh, were they substantive or?
Um, did, they did not change the substance of the answer, uh, what, they added a little bit of um, statutory citation to just uh, underline the board's authority to uh, request, impose the condition.
Okay, I'll take a look and, and deal with it, okay, thank you, John.
Okay, good, thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night, Ashley.
You're welcome.
Hey, good night, all.
Bye.